We ready? You ready?
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, June 12th, 2024. I would ask that we stand to observe a moment of silence, followed by a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started, this is the second meeting in the history of Dolphin County that we are being livestreamed. I think we had it posted on the door and want everybody to know that we are on livestream TV. So as you come in, all those comments will be recorded and a part of a livestream in an attempt to engage our citizenry and sort of be more transparent and open up county government to the level of participation that will only make the kind of changes that we need related to the future of Dolphin County. So you have been warned. The first order of business is the approval of minutes. The minutes are for the May 22nd, 2024 workshop meeting minutes, May 29th, 2024 legislative meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Douglas. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Second made by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. For those of you in the audience that don't know, the second meeting minutes that we will be taking up are salary board meeting minutes. The salary board in county government consists of the three commissioners, the controller, and the independently elected official or row officer. Or in the case of a courts, it would be the president judge that would also make up the final member of the salary board. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve the salary board meeting minutes for May 29th, 2024.
So move.
Move by Controller Bateman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Pies.
Commissioners, the board held an executive session on Thursday, June 6th, 2024 to obtain the advice of the solicitors on three pending matters. First was the consideration of restructuring the county's current debt obligation. The second was the consideration of changing a polling place in Swidere Township. The final matter was a matter of personnel.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pies? Hearing none, Mr. Spackman. We would like to call to order the election board meeting that has been properly advertised for today. And before we get started, just like to call on Mr. Spackman to provide some sort of context and summary related to what's in front of us today.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, at the last election board meeting, there was a motion to hold an additional meeting today to find an alternative polling place location for Swidere Township's first precincts. Multiple locations throughout the district were contacted to gauge willingness to serve as well as request to conduct a survey for clients of Americans with Disabilities Act. We found one location that fit that was Tri-Community Elementary School. Tri-Community Elementary School is the recommended location if the board decides to move polling place. It is close to the current polling place centrally located and public schools, buildings, or preferred locations to be selected as a polling place. As part of this process, notifications have been made to the current location through letters. We sent a certified letter as well as dropped off another letter at the polling place location. We can posted notices at the current location as well as the proposed location and five other locations throughout the district that is required per law and must be made at least five days prior to an election board meeting. This was made, I believe, two weeks, at least two weeks, two weeks ago. So that's all I have right now as far as background.
And we're required to have a public hearing, correct?
That is correct. Yep.
So at this point, if you could certainly step back, I'd like to make a couple of comments. As the chair of the Board of Commissioners, I want to ensure that, you know, we want to engage the public in discussion, conversation, and input. It's extraordinarily valuable to us to be able to have that level of dialogue and input within a Board of Commissioners meeting and outside of here. We work for you. And ultimately, you know, we want to always put ourselves in a position to be able to have that level of input. The one thing that those of you who know me know that I don't put up with a whole lot of disrespect. I lead with respect and love. And there will be no level of personal attacks or any kind of conversation that would go down any roads related to that. But ultimately today, we want to have your level of participation. So if something happens today where folks, and we would never want to try to ruin anybody's First Amendment rights and their ability to communicate effectively, but ultimately, you know, if somebody gets down a road, and I know some people are really, really anxious about these issues, I will politely ask you to go outside and collect yourself and maybe come back in and reserve the time for you to continue to utilize your three minutes. Today, we have set a timeframe of three minutes to be able to offer public comment. And I want to be clear, this is not a debate. We're not here to answer and back and forth and reappear at the mic. You've got three minutes to be able to provide your public input. And ultimately, you know, that public input can be provided by you and it will be valued. And I know it's valued by my fellow commissioners and the members of this board. So we want to make sure that we are open and certainly accommodating related to that public comment. But at this point, before any action is taken, we wanted to open this matter in front of the election board to public participation on these agenda items only. Any public participation? And please, if you could state your name and your address and for the record.
My name is Deborah Knowles, 6080 Hocker Drive, Ashford, PA. I am here today to speak on behalf of the Oberlin, Anhot, and Bressler residents who used the Bressler Firehouse as a voting location, my mom included. I know that Tom Conley has asked you to close down this location because of the Bressler firemen allegations that at this point are still unproven until the Attorney General's investigation is finished and published. I do understand, or I do not understand why he is doing this, but I can tell you it is no longer about the firemen anymore because Tom has already closed down the firehouse, taken the fire company off the call box, and removed the fire trucks. So there is no way they can run. As far as we know, there are no issues with the building or lot needing any kind of repairs. And our little community uses this building for birthday, wedding, anniversary, and other celebrations. This change would now affect the residents who are already devastated and grieving the loss of security of their neighborhood fire company to respond to their fires more quickly. And now they might have to make yet another change because of Tom? What more does he want to take away from these good, strong, and proud people? If my grandparents, Mary and William Hucks, also, Costelac, would still be alive, they would be standing here right with me fighting to keep their polling station open. Many of these people have voted at this location most of their lives and proudly enjoyed the walk up or the short ride to the neighborhood polling place. My mom loves visiting with her friendly Bressler neighbors there. She says they always make her feel happy and doesn't want to go anywhere else, even if it's only blocks away. You know many of these people personally, and they have not asked much of you through the years, only that you be fair and just. So we are all here today to ask you to champion our cause and keep this voting location open as we have championed your cause and voted you in time after time. Because only together can we all get through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Come on, ma'am, you're right up front. And you know what? How about we do this? How about we just have an orderly ability for us to be able to provide comments. If there are folks that really want to comment, let's start with the front row and then we'll work our way back from here on. We're okay with that? You're okay?
I didn't mind waiting a while because I'm going to take my comments, cut it down three minutes. My name is Joanne Seibert. I have lived in Bressler all my life. In fact, I've lived on the same street in Bressler all my life. Back in the times when you couldn't vote until you were 21, back in my times, plus you had to physically go to the Dolphin County courthouse to register. Ballot boxes were unheard of and should be now. On my 21st birthday, I did the most important thing I was going to do that day, register as an American citizen that will now be able to voice my approval or disapproval as to who will represent our constitutional republic and our commonwealth in all levels of government, federal, state, and local. As I walked out the door of the courthouse, I remember as if it was yesterday, I stopped, looked up at the sky, and it never looked clearer. I am now an American citizen with a voice. Who is, who of anyone here carries a voter's registration card? Me. I watched the May 8th meeting when Mr. Conley gave his unhinged comments as to why the election place of precinct should be changed. As a citizen that resides in precinct for 77 years and voted at the same election place for my 57 years of voting history, I take exception to just everything that he alleged. I heard this comment, well, I can't say that either.
Keep it respectful.
Yes, I can't say, that's what I'm saying. The polling workers, the poll workers have always been professional, courteous, unbiased, and helpful to all that pass through the polls. The Bressler Firehouse is easily accessible to all. Mr. Conley did mention handicap accessible. It's on a flat ground, first story. You walk in through the door and you're there. Let's see. On the party. The commissioners on a party line vote, three to two, voted to have all the vehicles in the fire station removed, even before the AG investigation is report, has been reported. And if anything, that would make the polling place even more favorable. The polling, the building he's suggesting, the elementary school is in a poor replacement. It has only one entrance and exit point. It has limited access, especially when school buses and personal vehicles are bringing or picking up children. Topography of the landscape is less appealing, and the walking distance from parking lots and polling locations would be drastically worse.
Thank you, ma'am. I apologize. The three minutes goes really fast. And I apologize, but we have to keep it fair and just for everyone that's here.
And then my final line is, this is a huge disenfranchisement to the citizens. Please vote against the move and see for what it's at.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Seibert Malatestanic, and I've been resident of Bressler all my life. I'm 78. And I have a list of 19 people smattering of all over around Bressler, of people who are against moving the location. I have a letter from the judge of elections for our one or precinct one. Do not support the decision to change the location of voting hall for Bressler residents. The current location is already ADA and handicap accessible, and we can open up and we can open up the bay and they can get in the other way if there's a problem with the front door. And within walking distance for the majority of Bressler voters. They come in the morning, they come in the afternoon, they come in the evening after they eat supper, before supper. They, they say thank you, they say very nice that you're here. They appreciate the fact that we're at the location that we are. And changing the location puts an undue burden of the taxpayers to fund the ADA renovations that would require at the new location. This decision was made by our locals, what our commissioners, without soliciting feedback from the local voters. This lack of communication to our voters will impact their decision to vote in the future and the burden it puts on our senior citizens who enjoy coming. Years ago, my aunt used to drive down, pick up the older ladies that didn't have husbands, that couldn't walk all the way up to come to Bressler. I remember her doing that as a kindness to the senior citizens. I ask that this decision be reconsidered due to the unnecessary cost and inconvenience to all residents who vote at the Bressler Firehouse. And this is a letter from the actual Judge of Elections, Patricia Salassi. And I am a poll worker at the Bressler Firehouse, and I've been one for, I think, six or eight years. And I enjoy the people. I enjoy seeing them, I enjoy calling them by their name. They like the idea that you know who they are and they've been willing to come. We have more people voting in Bressler in Precinct One than the other wards. And you have, you have that on your paperwork because you showed it to me on the computer. And our little village only has twelve hundred registered voters. They don't all come. We average three to four hundred at a time, and at the presidential election, we had close to eight hundred. So I, I really would appreciate that you stay at the same location.
Thank you, Ms. Malatestanic. And I think I took a look, there are fourteen hundred and twenty-four voters in the precinct. Any other public comment? Anybody, I should say, anybody else in the front row? Let me keep it consistent. Anybody else in the second row? Anybody in the third row? Third row.
Good morning, my name is Deb Harvey, one oh five South Forty-seventh Street in Lawton, Harrisburg, PA. Thanks for allowing me to be here today, Commissioners. I had a statement prepared in support of allowing the polling place to remain at the Bressler Fire Company because I believe that communities must honor and revere past tradition and history. It is the glue that holds us together as communities. After seeing the following post on Facebook, I don't think that I could say it any more eloquently than this anonymous poster did Sunday following the Bressler picnic, which was a huge success, by the way. On Facebook, kudos to the Bressler community tonight. To watch a whole community jump into action during an emergency at the picnic was very touching. Not only did people spring into action to help the individual, but there were those who made sure that all of the children stayed away and were unaware of what was going on. And then there were those who ran back and forth for supplies to the kitchen because Bressler no longer has any medical supplies. And then there also were those more than willing to meet and lead the emergency vehicles to the right location. Nobody questioned who it was that needed the help, what color was their skin? Was it a man or a woman, or what ethnicity was this person? They just jumped into action, no questions asked. That is the spirit of a community. A community shows its true colors in times of crisis, and Bressler, including its fire department members who were there that day and the club members who were there working, has proven to be a community to be proud of. If I could just add real quickly, I'm a retired paramedic. I heard from a paramedic who happened to be on the scene that evening. She also was a member of the Bressler Fire Department who no longer has a place there. They had to run to the kitchen to get gloves and towels because there were no medical supplies available to them. Normally Swatara Township will send a Tahoe on a really acute call. Nobody came from Swatara Township. So it was the Bressler Fire Department that actually saved that person's life because the person was actually critical. And that's really all I have to say today. Thank you very much for your time. I hope that you'll all think about what it's doing to our community to have yet another polling place being ripped away. We did this with Chambers Hill, I was here for that. Thank you all for the decision made on Chambers Hill. I feel it was the right one. Have a great day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else in the third row?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michael Tuckey. I'm from Swatara Township. I'm a resident and business owner and I'm also on the board. I have a lot of concerns with how this issue has been handled over the past few months. I, I saw the meeting a few weeks ago when Mr. Conley was up here and speaking. What I have to say is not meant to go after anyone, but.
Good, because I'm not going to allow it.
Okay. But the thing is, the comments that were made saying that Bressler Fire Company was, has been racist for a hundred and four years, that's not, you know, comments like that has been made over the past few months. There's a lot of information that's been put out there that has not been a hundred percent factual and correct. That's my concern. Tom Conley during that meeting did not speak for me. I have a lot of issues with what's going on, how this issue has been handled. I believe that we have a lot of really good talented people, good members of the community. There is an accusation that's out there, and I understand that. It's dealing with the social club. It's not the firefighters. We have lost a lot of good talented people in our community that helps through the fire service for years. One member's there, they've been, I believe, over fifty years and other ones over thirty. And like Deb Harvey mentioned, a lot of good talented people that can help in emergency situations. It's a huge loss to our community currently because unfortunately, instead of having due process take place, the majority of the board has voted to disband the fire service. And I'm not here, I understand we're here for the voting, but people have to understand what's going on in our community. The decision-making by the majority of this board has, in my opinion, has not been correct. I believe in due process. I believe that we should wait for the AG's office to thoroughly go through that investigation. And whatever findings they come out with, then we have to handle it from there. If there is any wrongdoing, there may be, there may not be, but we don't know until that point. And unfortunately, one of the commissioners, Shane Stills, mentioned about during his comments that our community is fractured. It sure is. It's fractured because of how everything has been handled recently. And I do believe in due process. I believe that doing this could possibly affect the voters, voter disenfranchise, moving the facility. And I don't believe in punishing anyone until you have all the facts in place. Respectfully, I say stop speaking.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else in the third row? Anybody in the fourth row? And I'm getting old and I got glasses, but I believe there's a fifth row back there. So is there anybody in the fifth row that has any comments or public comment? To my left? Anybody have any comment? In the back? Yep.
My name is Tom Conley, I live at three forty-five North Harrisburg Street. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Three minutes will be plenty of time. Just to clear up a few things that were already said. Swatara Township Board of Commissioners, five commissioners received allegations and was notified on the same day that the Attorney General's office had reopened the investigation. All five commissioners were present to discuss the strategy of moving forward, which resulted in setting up an investigative panel, which then reviewed the allegations. Not one of the five commissioners made an allegation. They all were made from the public. And it was many brave people. If you read, if you read the reports, it had to do with the fire company and their affiliated social club. Commissioner Tuckey, who just spoke, was part of the five. He walked out of the room as the plan was being set. So he might not agree with it, but he was part of the process. And it was a unanimous vote. Someone had said it was a three-two party line vote. Discrimination and racism is not a party line issue as far as I know. And I don't think it is here, it certainly isn't in Swatara Township. We have five commissioners. It was a unanimous vote of the people that vote. The three brave people that voted voted unanimously. Mr. Tuckey abstained. So he had due process himself. If he had an issue, he would have voted no, he would have done what he was obligated to do. But I just, I just want to put this out here. We heard from people, and I'm not saying that they're not great people. None of them are the people that were suspended. None of those are the people that were behind the policy, written policy, white males only, written policy that existed way longer than it should have. And none of them enforced the policy that I know of, the people that spoke today. So I'm not challenging them. The polling place is a short distance away. It was already posted that it was in the process of being moved. I think that was kind of, might have been a little misleading. But I do know Mr. Spackman reached out on the fifth of April to question the process. So you've had, you've had plenty of time to look at it. You have an overflow room downstairs, nobody's sitting there. It's a small issue because racism and discrimination doesn't really have many people on the other side. And I'm going to leave you with this. If Gordon Ranger rolled into Galveston and asked the people there what they thought should happen, I have a feeling there would have been a differing of opinion. The slaves, of course, would have loved to have been free. But I have a feeling the people that were slaveholders and had the tradition of holding those slaves probably would have spoken on the other side of the issue. Thank you for having this hearing and thank you for doing the right thing for the people of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? We're not given chances to come up and do rebuttals. That's not going to occur today. We wanted to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak and we want to be fair in the process. Is there anybody? I don't think there's any public in the control room or to the right of the room that wants to engage in public comment. All right, I believe the first matter of business that's in front of the Board of Commissioners is the approval of minutes from the May eighth, twenty twenty-four election board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Breeze made the motion to approve the minutes from May eighth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. On the polling place change from the current Friendship Engine House to the proposed Tri-Community Elementary School, is there a motion? I think it is Resolution eleven today of twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion for purposes of approval or disapproval by the board.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Breeze.
I just want to say, in the past several years, we've been directed by the Department of Justice to provide updated ADA accessibility to dozens of locations out of Dolphin County's one hundred and fifty-nine precincts and wards at a cost of over forty million dollars to the county. If the Department of Justice or the Attorney General's Office, both of whom are very aware of this particular topic, as we've seen an email sent to the board copying both an FBI special agent and the Attorney General's Office, if either of those entities directs us to move the polling place due to wrongdoing, then I will vote to do so. In the meantime, I spoke to our most recent voter registration election directors, Steve Chivetti with thirty-eight years of service and Jerry Feizer, our most recent director with ten years of service this morning. I asked both of them if they have ever received any complaints about the firehouse as a polling location, and they both said no. In the past forty-eight years. Their words, not mine. I also asked them what constituted consideration of moving a polling place, and the responses were similar. Both said if there is a petition by a minimum of ten residents, a combination of various parties. Number two, they both said if the polling place advised the county, they were no longer able or willing to serve as a polling place. And the third, as I had already mentioned, the threat of a Department of Justice lawsuit for ADA accessibility, which we are still currently dealing with. And that's my statement.
Any other comments? I'll make a few comments. The first one is, those of you who know me, and the idea of giving respect and leading with love was demonstrated today. Trying to ensure that everybody that you come across the path, that you meet, you have to treat with respect and love. I don't support anybody who stands against any group. And that goes for racism, it goes for LGBTQ, it goes, I was handicapped as a young kid. If you stand against that, I'm against you. I'm going to make that very clear in my statement. If you stand against that, I'm against you. And we are not in a position to have this be sort of a litmus test on where you stand on that position. Quite frankly, I believe that leaders are supposed to bring people together and not divide them in this nation. And we should find common ground and ways for us to be able to have dialogue and make systemic change that stops the barriers that existed for African Americans for far too many years. They still continue to exist around tables, around opportunities, around access. That should happen always. We need to continue to press to make that change. And for those of you who think it doesn't exist, you're wrong. You're wrong. But I also know that in twenty years and six months of being a Dolphin County Commissioner, I've not gotten one place, one concern, one issue, one person that has come to me and said, I have felt intimidated, I have felt threatened, I've been disenfranchised. And I don't, that's just not African American. That's all of protected class, anybody that is in there, white, black, all races, all identities. If there were issues of voter intimidation and suppression, we wouldn't be here today. I would have done everything within my power to change that. That would have happened immediately. If those issues are happening, they cannot exist. And in my discussions, instead of me assuming, I decided, how about we do something novel and reach out to the people that work in Election Day, you know, and talk to the people who are the volunteers and see what their experiences have been, see who, you know, sort of what has happened within the polling place. And by the way, they've not been contacted by anybody. But I will tell you the reason why Dolphin County has run and been the model for elections in this state and in this region is because of our competent staff, but also our capable volunteers who step up over and over and over to make this process one that we all know is going to be a free, fair, and accessible process that ensures that everyone's vote counts. And from my perspective, in discussing those, with those individuals, here's sort of a snapshot of what they had to say. They feel attacked. Several question whether or not they're supported and want to continue to serve in this role, being in the middle of such controversy. They believe that accessibility for seniors during a presidential year for so many people that walk to a polling place would be severely disrupted because of transportation and other issues. They feel that they're going to lose voters, that walk, there were some people that questioned the cost. And I want to be clear that I asked these questions of Mr. Spackman, and there are not going to be costs to making the transfer. We have information that, and also resources that allow us to be in compliance for this particular location that's in. for this particular location that's in question. So cost is one consideration this chief guy makes all the time. And it's one thing that was confirmed to me that would not be regardless of the decision that this board would make. I also, you know, wanted to really understand sort of the slippery slope that we're on here. Because that, to me, is probably more of a question related to, you know, a presidential year and at a time where we have got to stay away from any kind of other external issues. And I'm going to give you an example. You know, we have union halls, a union hall, the IW Able Union Hall. We've got Masonic Lodges. We've got various churches that are involved. There are multiple things that not everybody is going to agree with or prescribe to their beliefs. But they are accessible to the public in the locations in which they vote. And, you know, the idea of trying to have partnerships in those ways have to exist. Or if we're going to respond to external pieces, because quite frankly, my job is not to talk about what's going on at a social club. My job is to ensure that voters have access to a polling place, and they are able to vote on Election Day in a way that's going to ensure a free, fair, and accessible access to that polling place. The external pieces should not be a part of something that this election board is debating or talking about. And by the way, I shouldn't do this, but I'm against discrimination at any club, at any location, at any time. And I will make that clear. I've never been a member of, nor would I be a member of an organization that discriminates against anyone. That being aside, I have to make a responsible choice related to the future of the voting place in this county and particularly in this precinct. And without significant evidence that I've seen that there were, there are issues with voters and accessibility, I'm going to have to make that kind of choice. But I believe it's really important that, and I try to say this quite frequently, and, you know, in a day where everybody wants to play gotcha and finger point and be against each other, which divides our community, I quite frankly despise that. And if I ever leave county government, that's going to be the reason why. Because I want to see our ability to serve people, and I do that for people who are Republican, people are Democrat, people are independent, people who have no affiliation. We have a responsibility to do what's in the best interest of all of those we serve, particularly as it relates to elections. And when we talk about trying to do what's fair and right, I think that is always the side that I am going to choose. And in this case, that is going to be my choice as well. Is there any additional comments from the board before I call the vote? Okay, on Resolution eleven, the twenty twenty-four dash eleven, that is before us, a motion has been appropriately made by Commissioner Douglas and second by Commissioner Pries. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
The motion does not carry. Thank you all for your participation.
Prior to adjourning the election board meeting, could I ask Spackman some questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Not related to anything we've spoken about up to this point. Director Spackman, thank you. Do we currently have any ballot curing practices that are official, like this is our ballot curing? Like, policy?
No, we do not currently, no.
This is something that I've brought up in a lot of election board meetings at this point, and we've also talked about personally. Do you anticipate bringing to the board ballot curing policy that we will have prepared for the November election?
Yes, I currently have a draft with the solicitor, so.
Okay, great. So we'll be meeting again in plenty of time for you to roll that out. Because I just want to ensure that we don't, you're not under any time constraints.
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Great. All right, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yes, yes, Mr. Spackman. It's just a follow-up to my questions from the prior meeting. Just wanted to see where you're at on policies and procedures for the chain of custody and command for the ballot boxes.
Yes.
It's a presidential election. We are now June twelfth, and I'm wondering what the most recent update is on that topic.
Same answer to you, Commissioner. That is, that plan is also under the review of the solicitor right now. So hopefully, we will have an election board meeting scheduled soon. Thank you. Address both topics.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, my next order of business, as long as there's nothing additional from the commissioners for Mr. Spackman, is the public participation for agenda items only. Is there? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My apologies. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn the election board meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pries, second by Commissioner Douglas. Meeting adjourned. All right. Heading back into public participation, is there anybody that's here that wants to participate or comment on any of the agenda items? Comments on any agenda items? Directors or guests? Salary Board, Mr. Morgan?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
There have been no changes to the salary board packet that was sent out last Tuesday. We would request a vote on items one to twelve of the salary board packet if there are no questions.
Any questions for Mr. Morgan?
Yes, just confirming that these items in front of us are budgeted within each department's twenty twenty-four approved budget.
That is my understanding, yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Morgan before I entertain a motion? Do I have a motion on the salary board requests that are in front of us?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas.
Second.
Second by Controller Bateman. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Salary Board.
Personnel packet.
I'm sorry, personnel packet, personnel packet.
There was a revised packet sent out late Monday afternoon. There were five additions to the packet related to the clerk of court's office. If there are no questions, we would.
Is there any questions on the personnel packet for Mr. Morgan? Could I have a motion to accept the amended packet?
So moved.
Move second by Commissioner Pries, second by Commissioner Douglas. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Commissioners? I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out yesterday. The only item I'll note, we did send more money to First National Bank, and we were able to negotiate getting their rate from five and a half percent to five point five five percent. So it's not a ton, but every little bit helps. The purchase order packet has been reviewed, and that's ready for your approval.
Do we have a mo, first of all, are there any questions for Mr. Spackman? My only comment would be, and I know we're not on the budget and finance report, but the rates look really favorable, and I think, you know, the county concentration account, the perspective it's in, we need to make sure that we're capturing every dollar. So thank you for being attentive to that. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase order packet today?
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Pease.
Commissioners, I have nothing to report unless there are questions of me.
Any questions for Mr. Pease? Solicitors' report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. All items under Roman fourteen of the agenda matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved by the solicitor's office for action by the board.
Any questions for Mr. Owens? Hearing none. We have quite a, I guess, we stand for recycling, but based upon the agenda, it appears that we have, you know, captured a couple of trees in the process. But this week, just for the, just for the discussion purposes, we have our human services budget, which we had put on the table last week. And ultimately, these are the following contracts that are going to be engaged for the various categorical agencies, which are in a different fiscal year. So for those of you watching at home, we have a budget that goes from January first to December thirty-first that captures all of the things external to, you know, our human services, which are the Department of Aging, Department of Human Services, the Department of Children and Youth, the Department of the Children and Youth, as well as mental health, autism, intellectual programs, along with our local emergency planning and response. So those are all areas that have been adopted. These are reflective of the contracts that are required for the upcoming year in those categorical agencies. So that's the reason for the lengthy agenda. Are there any, is there a motion to accept items one through, let me get the whole way to the end, one fifty-four on today's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, former business. I think we, I was informed we need to take a little bit of action for an update. Could I call on Chief Clerk?
Yeah, I'll explain a bit. So in the process, we've had this tabled a couple of meetings to make sure we got the appointment right during that process. Mr. Fisher informed me he would not like to take that appointment. So we are still going to look for a further appointment and get that done in a timely manner. But we do not, we no longer need to consider.
So the appropriate action would be a motion and a vote to pull it off the table? And then to vote it down, correct? All right.
Motion to take number one under former business off the table.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Motion to, what, we just make a motion to strike it down?
I would say a motion to deny the request.
Motion to deny the request due to lack of interest. Yep. Motion to deny the request due to lack of interest.
All right, do I have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, new business? Commissioners, discussions and actions. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I want to take a moment to acknowledge and celebrate Pride Month. This is a time to honor the contributions, achievements, and history of the LGBTQ plus community in America, throughout the world, but certainly here in Dolphin County. It's a reminder of the progress we've made towards equality and the work that still lies ahead. As commissioners, we have a unique opportunity to foster an inclusive environment where everyone throughout the county feels valued and respected, whether that be our workforce or the two hundred and eighty-six thousand residents here in Dolphin County. I'm excited to announce that Friday, we'll be having a Pride press conference announcing some exciting steps that we are taking to continue to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion here in Dolphin County.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pries? I would just like to thank the staff. I know that the people that do the work and continue to do the work every day, you know, are challenged as we try to get through both difficult cycles that we are going through with the Solicitors' team, the front office staff, and the directors, Randy. I know how much stress we're all under. I don't want to take any opportunity to be able to thank all of those critical employees that both are reflective of who I talked about and others who continue to work tirelessly to ensure that the trains and the bills and the buses continue to run on time in Dolphin County. So I just wanted to honor and value and say thank you to all of our staff who continue to do that. I know it's not easy, and we value you, and quite frankly, you're the reason why we're able to continue to conduct business. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I forgot to mention this, but it was a fantastic event this weekend. Very well attended. The music was amazing, the food, the beverages. It ran very smoothly. I want to give a shout out to Anthea Stebbins and her team at Parks and Recreation for putting on the Fourth Annual Proud PA Event. Beautiful weather, and the venue was perfect as always. So congratulations to you and your team at Parks and Rec and security and all the volunteers who gave up their time to make that such a wonderful event.
Thank you, Commissioner. Lastly, I'd like to note that next week is Juneteenth. It's going to be the first official time that Dolphin County, as a county, offers a day off and officially recognizes Juneteenth as a national holiday. So I want to acknowledge that, ask everybody to go out and participate, learn, engage. I think there is a series of great events that are happening in this region to talk about both the history and the roles that individuals in this region have played in many ways, and what that means to deep generations of families that are engaged and involved, and why, in fact, that we are proud to celebrate Juneteenth here in Dolphin County. So so the point of that is not only to celebrate, but also let folks know next week we will not have a meeting on the eighteenth, because it does fall on Juneteenth, and we are officially off as a formal holiday. Is there any additional questions for, from the board? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, no, 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 no. Let me not do this. I've been, I've been consistent in failing to live up to my responsibilities at the end of the meeting to talk about the correspondence, which will be directed to the Chief Clerk and the Solicitor's Office in order for us to be able to take the appropriate level of action. And finally, this gives our final opportunity to offer the chance for public participation for anybody in the audience. Yes. Wearing green too, fellas. No pun intended.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
My name is John Trey Williams, and I come before you today. When it's appropriate, you'll receive a request for a grant for the, for a FACS, for the FACS Fest event that we have coming up September fifth through the eighth. However, I want to explain why that is more than just a request for an event. I said before, not only as John Trey Williams, but as the Central Pennsylvania Film Commissioner by way of seven certifications recognized by the state, even found on their official website, all of which is a result adopted, adopted by the resolution given on July twenty twenty-two, which is in the packet, too. I just want to take your attention to the final couple of statements in the resolution, where it says, whereas the county envisions the Central Pennsylvania Film Commission as an office run through FACS to attract film production to the county, provide resources for potential filmmakers, vendors, crewmakers, and other participation, and coordinate the efforts of public-private stakeholders as it relates to film production. Now therefore be it resolved that by the commissioners of Dolphin County, Pennsylvania, as follows. The county approves the creation of the Central Pennsylvania Film Commission as the film office within the county to be administered and managed by the Film Arts and Tourism, should be Culture and Tourism Specialists, five oh one C three organization. The county designated the Central PA Film Commission Office as the representative to the film industry for the county area. The county supports the mission of Central PA Film Commission to provide leadership and direction on film, video, multimedia production in the county. The county supports the submission by FACS for the application of membership to the AFCI. And the rest is there for you to read, too. That, of course, was resolved and signed by all three commissioners at the time. And in the early version of forming the Film Commission, I worked very closely with Commissioner Hartwick and DCD Office in its formation and determined not to call the office in its formation the Dolphin County Film Office. And the reason for that was because the counties that were, it would send a red alert to surrounding counties like Lancaster, York, and things like that, who are already trying to establish a Film Commission. And quite frankly, Lancaster and their infrastructure was far ahead. I'll speak more to that. So taking that request, did embody the name, the Central Pennsylvania Film Commission. And that strategy was a success, because as the Central PA Film Commission, Lancaster decided to get behind us and support, as well as York, and as well as six other surrounding counties. Since the formation, however, in twenty twenty-two, we as an organization and as a partner of Dolphin County have not received any additional resources. This is getting crippling for us to sustain as an organization, continue to do our good work. However, in spite of that, not having any financial resources, I do have data, along with Doug Brown. We gathered data from DCD and discovered that in the past ten years of the distribution of the tax credit for the film, tax credit, only two percent went outside of Philadelphia and Pittsburgh for a ten-year period. Facing that discrepancy head on, I met with Commissioner Hartwick, and we met with the seated responsible person at that time that distributed the tax credit and asked them. uh, responsible person at that time that distributed the tax credit and asked them why this was and let them know that it was unfair. Uh, it became obvious that we were going to have to take further action and go to legislation. Uh, we, uh, Ms. Phyllis and I, uh, faced the discrepancy head on with administration, uh, with legislation and got it approved in the House to create a House Bill twelve nineteen, a five percent incentive increase for the T-zone for anyone that is filming in the T-zone area of the state. Uh, effort that was passed in the House is now waiting to pass, uh, in the Senate. Uh, our efforts in that were approved in the House in six months. We were told that it may take seven years to get that approved. So, uh, the deputy secretary at that position, uh, is no longer with the state and we now have a new Film Commissioner for the state. And we are now able to, uh, we were able to display our grievances with the new Film Commissioner on their oncoming. Uh, a result of that is shown in the impact report from the email from the, uh, State Film Commissioner. Uh, that, that shows that the impact data that, uh, we have a record high of tax credit distributions in Central Pennsylvania now. Uh, so there's seven projects which were utilized in Lancaster, uh, primarily shot, five of them primarily shot, all in Lancaster. Um, these are independent projects and then you could see that the, uh, there's a, a upcoming film project for, uh, three million dollars in York. And you can see the different, uh, projects that are there. Now, this is why I said that it would be dangerous to just be called the Dauphin County Film Office. Because as you can see, Lancaster is killing the game in terms of that. And a lot of those are independent filmmakers from Lancaster who have registered to get tax credits and have been approved due to our efforts in pushing that in the, in the, uh, in the Film Office. Also as a result, we have, um, uh, the story of Milton Hershey, a project from Lionsgate, uh, for thirty-six million dollars that our office pushed and courted since November of last year. And as a result, you see the letter here from when we asked for the local impact for that spend. The local impact states that the, the, uh, labor would be nine point two million dollars. That's just for labor. Uh, also for the estimated spend for ven- vendors, which are all the supportive services would be sixteen point nine million dollars locally. That's a total of sixteen point one or six, six point nine locally, total of sixteen point one million dollars, uh, here, locally. So I wanted to give that update on what our office has been doing and we are taking a tiered approach to, to gain your support. This year we asked for your support in a grant by way of, uh, fifty thousand dollars to hold the event, which is to, to bring power and visibility to Dauphin County. People have to see us as a juggernauts and we will be, uh, soliciting your support even further to help us with our sustainability to continue these efforts. Because, uh, we, as I go to other counties and things like that, they're asking, what is your county doing? And I just solicit your report, uh, your, your, uh, support moving forward.
Just a quick, I know this is not a debate or we shouldn't be back and forth, but there's so much opportunity here. I mean, the idea of us not competing for these dollars, um, you know, really had put us in a position where we couldn't capitalize on some of that, you know, revenue with independent films and these networks that are streaming. I think there are many opportunities now that you have positioned us in a way, both with the relationship with Film Commission and the T, to be able to compete for some of these tax credit dollars, which is ultimately the incentive that these companies look for in order to make decisions about where they shoot. The reverberating impacts to our economy are huge and I've seen the vision and you, you know, I'm squarely in support of, uh, of the ability for us to be able to both capture that market and without resources, you've done a phenomenal job. I'm excited to see what you will do as resources begin to flow and we begin to take a, an aggressive approach with marketing this region. Cause I believe when people find Dauphin County with the rural, urban and suburban settings and the ability for us to be able to have a great cost of living with, uh, with, with the actual employment rates, partnering with the potential building trades and the trades, I think the economic, uh, impact to this region, we, we are not even imagining how much that could be uh, with the small level of, of impact of investment. So you've got my support and you have for a long time on this.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Um, what are the financial contributions of York and Lancaster County to your organization as they've already seen, um, positive economic impact from your commission?
Um, do you mean as a, a county in terms of county offices or, or things that are occurring like, uh, we have?
Not the impact on the community, what are they contributing to your organization to allow you to?
Are you referring to the county offices?
Or are you? Sure. Like the county, uh, whatever grant money, whatever financial assistance they would provide.
Um, I think it would be a mistake for me to approach the counties and ask the counties for support and money when I haven't received that from Dauphin County. Because the first question is, what is your county doing? I don't want to put this at, in that position. So I've not approached the other counties.
Okay.
However.
I ju- I just feel like we're being asked to support an event, which I'm in support of, that includes York, Lititz and Harrisburg. And we're being asked to contribute fifty thousand. I'm just being, I guess I'm just wondering, are they contributing to it as well? Because it is a regional event that has multiple counties involved. That's my only curiosity. I don't want to be footing the bill for Lancaster and York. That's I guess my concern.
Well, think of it as a traveling circus. In our portion of the circus in this town, we're requesting for that fifty thousand dollars for what takes place here, which is a film festival and a music festival that, uh, would be highly produced, high, high-end production to make us look good in this county. When we go to those other counties, uh, it's other things that are taking place there where again, I have not approached the counties because I don't want to put myself in position for that question, which would be, what is your county? Same thing you're asking?
Our county's considering a fifty thousand dollar grant might be a good answer. Like, I guess what I'm saying is, uh, I, I, we can have a conversation off, like, uh, but I'm just, um, I want to make sure that, I, I want to make it clear, I'm in support of this. I think this is an amazing thing. I think bringing film to our region, I think, uh, spotlighting Dauphin County, I'm in support of. I just want to be cautious to, to be the only ones investing in something that's going to have regional impact for other counties. Like as much buy-in as we can get from other counties, um, I want to support you in that endeavor. And if it's, and if there's a timeline thing that I'm not understanding of, like we're the first domino that drops and then the other funding will come, I completely understand that. I, and, 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 and in that case, but that is part of your hope, I would guess, is that, or, or desire?
Not only part of my hope, it's part of my strategy.
Okay, strategy, okay, yeah.
Because I do not want to pigeonhole us in that regard and, and kind of.
That answers my concern.
Yeah.
And I think Commissioner makes a great point. Um, but, and, and I don't think we are the first, I, from my understanding, there was, uh, an event that you had that the, uh, Center County Tourism Bureau has sent you resources, which I, I think they're reaching out. Uh, you know, I would have liked to have been the first in financially, but there have been both organizations and folks from those regions that have supported those kind of events, um, that e- even with four million tourism dollars. So that wouldn't be the first time.
Absolutely.
Right.
Uh, this event looks like it's coming pretty soon in September, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I would assume you need this money or the, these resources pretty quickly, like, uh, in order to pull off a music festival, uh, as we're looking at, we're in June now. Are you working with the Office of EDC then, sure that we get those, that, that application soon?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I just want to follow it up. First of all, um, I think that this initial fifty thousand dollar seed money is, uh, with the potential to input an impact of one hundred fold, uh, being that you're based here in Dauphin County. Uh, hopefully in twenty twenty-five and, and beyond, you'll be asking those other counties also to participate as well. Uh, but I, I think, uh, the opportunity here, when you look at the, the impact of the, the movie from Milton Hershey is, um, is pretty, pretty amazing. I think it's something that is long overdue. Uh, we did have the tourism dollars that we just voted on, uh, two weeks ago. So there was a process there and a timeline. Uh, but we're going to need to, uh, discuss that, whether through the Solicitor's Office, we're able to make that happen during the year twenty twenty-four based upon our guidelines within tourism applications and, um, support. But I'm in support of this if we're able to.
So Vince, could you brief the commissioners related to where we're at with that, the questions that were asked, both by Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Priest? Good questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, any more, uh, individuals that want to wish to give public comment? Mr. Summerford? I guess the theme today is green. Did you and Phyllis coordinate outfits or?
Uh, we must have.
It wasn't planned, Commissioners. Hi, my name is Kelly Summerford and, um, uh, president here of Dauphin County and I'm also the location services for the Central Pennsylvania. Location Services Manager for, uh, the Central Pennsylvania, um, Film Commission. And I just want to add to, uh, Commissioner, uh, uh, Justin's, uh, question. Here is the thing, we have other organizations and other people from those counties who will be, uh, uh, putting in dollars. We can't tell you who they are because we don't want to, uh, uh.
And you are live streamed?
Yes, and so I have to be very careful not to mention their names. So it's not just the county commissioners who are, are the, are, uh, we are asking to give dollars. It is also those organizations and other people that will be impacted by film coming to their areas as well. I am fifty years in Screen Actors Guild. I understand what we need in this area. Most of the jobs that I did were always outside of the T area. We were always in Philadelphia, Pittsburgh and, uh, other.
Other areas.
Other areas. So I just want to make it clear, we are not just asking Dauphin County, you know, to support it, although we are, you are the, we.
You're the host.
You're the host. You're the home. And we want to inspire other regions to do the same. We have not approached the commissioners.
Okay.
And, and York or Lancaster. However, I believe that we will get their support.
Once we get, once they know we have your support, that's the key. Knowing that Dauphin County is supportive of what's being done and the fact that there's a lot of money that can be generated when they're talking about vendors, even cleaners make a lot of money. Everybody makes money. So it makes a big difference. So that's why we're making the pitch for Dauphin County. I'm on the advisory committee and I'm only on it because I believe in the vision. I believe in what can be done and the fact that people like Lionsgate and, uh, Disney, Amazon, all of them have been discussing ways that they can come into Dauphin County and Central Pennsylvania. And we have right here in Dauphin County, for instance, the most beautiful state building anywhere in the country. We have rolling hills, we have urban, suburban and rural areas right here in our county that can be utilized and has been utilized in the past for movies. And so these are the reasons why they're looking at us and we don't want Philadelphia and Phil- and Pittsburgh, and I'm from Pittsburgh. But we don't want them to be able to get the money to come in here to do what needs to be done and take the money back to their counties. We want the money to stay here in Dauphin County and make sure that the residents of Dauphin County benefit, benefit from what goes on here, that their hires, there's a possibility of hiring a lot of people to do a lot of different things. But most importantly, it puts us on the map as one of the most beautiful places for filmmakers to come in. And there was a Film Commission meeting, well, um, not a meeting, it was a seminar last year. That was phenomenal. People came in from Hollywood, all over the place to talk about what was going on or what could go on here in Dauphin County. So this is why we're here today and we thank you in advance for your support.
We all have to be cooperative, cooperative with each other and, and this region. Um, Phyllis has said it quite well in terms of, uh, the beauty that we have here. I was, uh, Eddie Murphy's stand-in for the distinguished gentleman and when we were doing that, shooting that at the Capitol, one of the things that, uh, Hollywood said, this is the most beautiful Capitol ever. I didn't say Hollywood did, so I guess we have to believe it. So, uh, there are a lot of things that we have here. I'm looking at locations all over the place, you know, um, but I did want to ease your mind that we're not just asking, uh, uh, county commissioners, we are also asking other organizations that work with tourism. You know, that build the economic base for those other areas. So we're, we're, I, I just want you to feel comfortable when you do, uh, give us this fifty thousand dollars because I'm sure that, you know, you all will do that.
My question, just to be clear, my questions don't reflect a lack of support, just curiosity about strategy.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's all, that's all, that's all I was, all I was trying to.
All of those tensions because I am there. I am in York, I work in York occasionally. Uh, I run their Underground Railroad Museum and so understand, we are asking this. You are the host. We are, we, we love you guys. We want this to work out for us. And the Film Commission is doing phenomenal things. Believe us.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm the auspices of John Trey Williams and we appreciate him being.
Thank you for your comments.
With all the certified people, including everybody certified, you know, and this is, this is a beautiful thing.
It's been, it's been great work.
We appreciate your support and your funding.
Thus, thus we're wearing green. You see, that's the, that's the theme. Okay. Is there any other individuals that have a, um, a comment for the Board of Commissioners? I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Mo- motion made by Commissioner Douglas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Priest, meeting adjourned. Thank you.